Of God's soul and matter. I will, as you see in my subtitle, read that Vedic Dharma Aptitude Test. I have put a green color on the word "test". What I mean to say is, the way I am going to speak is not necessarily to prepare you for that test. It is more to transmit Vedic Dharma knowledge or aptitude part. So of course, I have in mind basically, as if I am speaking to teenagers, because that's what is the age group who can join this particular course. Of course, there will be some many adults and other senior people also. So my vocabulary etcetera is geared so that a teenager can also understand. The way I have designed the presentation is not necessarily following the book as such, but transmitting those ideas in a slightly different manner to raise your Vedic Dharma knowledge so to say. And not just to prepare for the test which may be based on the particular book as such. I am very much aware of that particular book and the author, Pratipna Devaji Vedalanka. But the book was written quite many decades ago. And as Vishuddhi mentioned, I have a slight engineering science background. So I want to convey the same topic, the same subject matter in a slightly different manner. But you will get the idea whatever is in the book that will be covered but in a slightly different manner. Saying that takes me to the slide number two, which is also nothing but the title, but I have re-titled it. So what I am going to speak today is Satya Sanatan Vedic Dhamm as is known. And in the modern terminology, it can be viewed as Vedic Unified Theory of Matter and Consciousness. So matter and consciousness, these two terms include what we know with the three eternal entities, namely God, soul and matter. So you will see that matter is already as a matter. And the term consciousness in this slide in the title represents both consciousness, my own consciousness namely soul and that of the infinite consciousness that is God. So we are taking care of all the three entities, God, soul and matter, but it is paraphrased in a slightly different manner. That's, I am devoting next three slides to look at the present situation where the present world seen so to say. That is my slide number three. The slide number three is depicting an overview of where do we stand as the world is visible to us. So we are living in the present world where the human society as a whole humanity is broadly divided between two groups. Of course, there is a small minority who may not be either of these two groups, but these are the two groups we are going to look at it. There is a major groups namely religion of faith. And then significant portion of humanity subscribes to one religion or another. Then there is another column that is science. And of course, today is the age of science, so we want to look at that also. So these are two poles apart and let's look at their features in a very quick manner. When it comes to the religions, they take into account so to say matter as well as something called spirit, which takes care of consciousness. While science on the other hand is treating matter alone, it doesn't have any room to consider something which is a non-physical entity. So that's where two streams differ. Religions are including both matter and spirit where science includes matter alone. Let's follow the religion furthermore, but his statement is not very logical and rational. It may take recourse to faith and that's why religion is faith-based. Where science is very logical and rational and it goes by evidence-based. And if it is something accepted, it becomes a scientific theory or law etcetera. Now since it is faith-based, some people have faith A, some people have faith B and so on so forth. So there are multiplicity of religions and that gives rise to sectarian groups. There are different sects and groups. They have different religions because they have different faiths. Where science is universal, it's the same science in India, in Japan, America, Europe wherever it is. So it is a universal principle, universal laws that are acceptable to the entire scientific community. When we come back to the religion side, because they are divisive, sectarian, they have different faiths, there is a kind of friction and there is a lot of conflict that may even lead to wars, battles and all kinds of things as we can see even in the present times. Where science is very unifying force. So if you look at the red color here, on the side of religion, it was probably most likely founded out of compassion, but it exists out of fear. You know, people who follow certain religion, they have an element of fear if I don't do this, something may happen wrong with me in the present life or in the next life or after the lives, whatever it is. On the science side, everything sounded very positive, but then again they are stuck at two points. First is, what is my consciousness or what is my ultimate seat of consciousness? Or who am I in a total sense? Am I just this body or somebody else living in this body? So they are not able to guide us in a very convincing manner in this direction. And that leads to another point, that what is the essential purpose of life? Why I am in this world or why this world is there? What am I supposed to do here? What should be the final ultimate objective of my life? Or do I come here just like any other animal and just go away? Of course, we have a lot of motivation. A human being can aspire for many, many things. So that purposefulness is slightly missing here. So that is the way things stand here. So in this background, we want to ask ourselves if there could be a unified theory which could take care of all that science is talking plus fill up this gap of where the mainstream science is missing, the consciousness and what is the objective of the human life? Suppose there was such a theoretical concept, then I give it a name, a conceptual name, Unified Theory of Matter and Consciousness, that is shown in the slide number four. Slide number four is just presenting a possible unified theory of matter and consciousness. If we knew that, that will explain everything. That will tell me who I am, how should I lead my life? What should be the objective of my life? How should I interact with other human beings, with other animals and other species? How should I eat food, what kind of food I should eat? Everything will be guided very properly if we had something like a unified theory of matter and consciousness that explained everything that is happening in this world. It's of course very challenging task, but that's what we want to say, that Satya Sanatan Vedic Dhamm is indeed this unified theory of matter and consciousness. And in that background, I want to discuss with you the three alternatives. Let's say for the time being, we look at this slide number five. And that will end with the introductory background and then we get to the business. So this slide number five is just showing as things stand today. On the lower side, these are ocean of humanity. These are all human beings who want to make sense out of their life and achieve the loftiest objective possible. And there is a yellow path there. If you go straight on that, that ends with the destination, the unified theory of matter and consciousness. And that's what is so to say Satya Sanatan Vedic Dhamm, SSVD in short. So Satya Sanatan Vedic Dhamm is capable of taking every human being to the destination and let him know and see what unified theory of matter and consciousness is. And that can guide him appropriately for the whole course of life. As I said, the present science as it stands, which is that small, I will say small brown box, a circle, a square box of S that is on the path, yellow path, that is very much on the right course, but it doesn't quite go to the destination. As I showed to you, it is still not able to give us convincing description, what is the true nature of my consciousness and why this whole world exists? What am I supposed to get out of it? So that's where the science stands here, which is slightly short of its destination. And then there are lot of other dark brown boxes, R1, R2, R3 and R4. There are multiple religions. They are for some time being they are on the right course, then they deviate from it because they borrow some ideas which are not quite rational and logical. So they end up in a, in a so to say dead end. So the kind of, let me, if I were to go back to the previous slide, which was the Unified Theory of Matter and Consciousness, in terms of a picture which is formed out of say hundred pieces of puzzle. So those hundred pieces of puzzle if you have it, then you can construct theoretically that beautiful picture of the world, isn't it? So the science here has eighty or so kayak pictures, but is missing the twenty or so other pictures and it is struggling to make those. The religions R1, R2, R3, R4, they have some fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty kayak pictures, but then they have another bunch of which are wrong pieces of that puzzle. So say it is sixty plus forty. So if you have hundred pieces, but sixty are kayak pieces, but forty are wrong pieces, you can never construct that picture in no matter how long you try it, isn't it? So that's where they are at that end. And this green box of H which is Hinduism. Hinduism is slightly unusual religion in the sense, it has hundred plus say twenty extra. So it has hundred and twenty pieces. So hundred pieces are kayak pieces. But twenty over the course of last four, five thousand years which was India's decline, it has picked up some twenty or so wrong pieces. So theoretically, a common Hindu may think he has hundred kayak pieces and he can always construct this beautiful picture of the unified theory of matter and consciousness. But it is very, it is a almost an impossible task because he cannot know what are the twenty wrong pieces. If you don't know the twenty wrong pieces, you cannot discard them. And there only you can have hundred kayak pieces. And that is the beauty of Ayasamayaj or Satya Sanatan Vedic Dhamm, that we can theoretically get to those hundred kayak pieces. And then you can make the whole picture of the world as unified theory of matter and consciousness. So the ideas I am sharing with you are of this nature. And now let's go to the business, what the task I have been given, to share with you what this whole tinity of God, soul and matter and all this is all about. So my presentation is in two parts, so that we take a fifteen minute break for any question also. In part one, I concentrate on me, me as a human being and ask who am I? And then in part two, we will concentrate on the universe we live in. So of course, as you can visualize, once we go into part two, we will have the whole tinity. So God, soul and matter, everything will come in. But here we will be concentrating more like soul and body and mind. So you know, we are a slight deviation from that particular book. There the part, chapter three was God and chapter four was the tinity. But now here the part one is about myself, my soul. And part two will have that tinity which includes God. So we will cover all that is covered in chapters three and four, which are available to you in any case. But you get an opportunity in this evening to listen to the same ideas but from a slightly different angle. Let's continue with the part one, which is, the key concept is that of our soul, what is called as Jiwatma. So this is Unified Theory of Matter and Consciousness. So we want to say at the outset that our consciousness is not resultant from matter. It is independent entity. So it is an independent entity and that is a non-physical entity. So that's where I am now on slide number seven. Slide number seven, the first bullet point is saying soul is a non-physical singularity. Singularity is a mathematical term, but we are all familiar with a simple, simplest singularity. In geometry, we have been told that there is a point. Point is defined as something without length and width etcetera. But it has a location, it exists at that. So we take a pointed pencil and on a graph paper, we walk certain dimensions on X axis, then Y axis, say three comma four, then X equal to three, Y equal to four. And as a child, we used to put our pointed pencil there. That this is the point P existing at the location three comma four. So that point existed and we took, used a pointed pencil for that. And we knew it ideally, that point should have no length or width. So that such a thing is called a singularity. Not going much into complex concepts. I want to make things simple so that everybody can understand what I am talking about. And even school children know what a point is. So that's why this is the simplest singularity I am mentioning. Now let's imagine a tiny lamp, you know, a small tiny lamp in a corner of a hall. As you enter into the hall, it is all dark. But you switch it on, then that lamp is brightening the hall. It sends in the light everywhere. Now every part of the hall is visible to you. So I am asking you to imagine a tiny lamp which is a source of physical light. And just imagine it became so small, so small that it became of zero dimension, like a point light. It is a conceptual imagination. But suppose you are able to imagine a small lamp which has no length, width etcetera, but still it is able to throw light. Just imagine such a lamp, then that's what our soul is. So the third bullet point is showing that soul is the light of consciousness. It's not the physical light, but it is emitting a light of consciousness. So our soul is somewhere in our head region and it is constantly emitting the light of consciousness. So at this point like my hand is, I am raising my hand, I can lift things etcetera because my hand is conscious. How does it get its consciousness? Because that soul is emitting that light of consciousness. So instead of physical light, it is conceptual light of consciousness. So because of that ability, souls has three important powers. That is called three shaktia. Shakti is that Sanskrit term for power. Soul has three powers. What are they? I am able to know something, you know, like a book has a lot of knowledge. But the book itself doesn't know that knowledge, isn't it? Book is just piece of paper. But when I read the book, I gain knowledge, isn't it? So that's how I am defined from that book. Book is just certain pages of the papers have been bound together and there is a black ink which is scribbled here and there. The book as an entity cannot get that knowledge. But I as a human being, because I have that soul, I can grasp that knowledge. So that is my ability to know. And if I know something, I can feel or experience it. You know, there is a, we all have an awareness of the experience such a joyful and painful experience. So we go through a wide spectrum of joy and pain, isn't it? That is our ability of soul. And then also I can act like I can lift that book and place it elsewhere. So this is outgoing action. So soul has these three powers to know, to feel. So the Sanskrit terms are jahn, bhog and kayaam. If you don't get my Sanskrit term, there is no problem. That's why everything here on the slides is in English. So soul has the power to know, soul has the power to feel the experience. This is, in Sanskrit, we call it bhog. And soul has the power to act. So outgoing is action, incoming is knowledge and then we go through an experience. Let's continue now. But these powers of the soul, I cannot really use them unless I have instruments of body and mind. So that's what the next slide number eight is about. So we are a bundle of so to say body, mind and soul. Soul was my non-physical consciousness, whereas body and mind are my instruments. They are made of matter, like body is of course visible, it is made of matter so to say. So let's look at the first bullet point. The soul needs these instruments of mind and body to be able to use its powers, those three powers we just now talked about. And both these instruments, mind and body are made of matter. So that matter we will discuss again in part two, in the tinity, more in detail. Now I am just trying to conceptualize how this soul is working within me. So we say soul is enveloped by mind as thumb in a fist. So there is a picture shown here. If you make a fist such that your thumb is covered by the palm, then that's what is described in an upanishad, this is what I am. So what is it? This is a tiny shell somewhere in the head region with subatomic dimensions. So this is very important to appreciate that mind that we are talking about is much smaller than even nano dimensions, isn't it? Because like the third bullet point is saying, the tiny shell where the soul is covered, enveloped in mind like a thumb in a fist, that tiny shell enters into father's body and then into mother's body and then emerges into the world with its own individuality. So of course, that's the way I entered into my father's body, but nobody could have seen it, isn't it? Because that soul and mind covered is a very, very small subatomic dimensions. This is very important in Vedic philosophy. Otherwise, in common mainstream thinking, usually the bane is considered as mind. But our view of mind is slightly different. It is a made of subatomic particles. And that is the mind, the last bullet point shows that that mind carries the data from previous life. So you know, I have been born with certain talents, certain weaknesses and all that. All that has, I have inherited or have been carried forward from my previous life. So my mind had all that data that has been brought into with me into the present life. Let's move on to the next slide, slide number nine. Which shows that evidence for soul. If you want to say our unified theory is scientific theory, it should be evidence-based, isn't it? That's the way we are looking at it. So we are asking what is the evidence for soul? So here the subtitle in slide number nine is, let's ask who is enjoying these experience? And I have listed three experiences. This is nothing uncommon, we all go through in everyday life. So experience number one is, we eat food and suppose I am enjoying it. Suppose I am eating a delicious dish, I like it and I am enjoying it. Then in this experience, we know it, body and mind also participate. They are active, they are actively participating. And then I enjoy this particular food I am eating. Experience number two is slightly mind-based. Say you have solved a complex mathematical problem, that also gives you a kind of inner joy. So we call it as say Joy of Ueka moment. You know, you got with a fantastic new idea and you are very happy with it. And in those moments, body is more or less inactive, but mind was functioning as an active, is it not? Now in the third experience, we say it is deep dreamless sleep. When you are in very deep sleep, then both body and mind are inactive in the sense, you are not doing consciously anything with it, there are no dreams also happening, nothing is happening. But when you come out of it, you say that was fantastic, you enjoyed that deep sleep. So whenever we come out of that deep dreamless sleep, we feel very light and it's a weatherful light feeling. And you say I enjoyed that sleep, that was very good. So now the title of this slide is, who is enjoying in all these experiences? You know, everybody, somebody says, I enjoyed food, I enjoyed that Ueka moment, I enjoyed deep dreamless sleep. Now who is the I that must be common in all the three experiences? In the first one, body and mind were participating. In the second one, body didn't participate much, mind was active. And in the third one, both body and mind were relatively inactive, almost totally inactive. So there has to be, that is the evidence, still I enjoyed that experience. That means there is somebody inside me other than body and mind. So that is me, my soul, that has to be non-physical because this is different from body and mind and body and mind are made of matter. So we are now coming to the end of the part one, slide number ten and then we will have a quick review of part one in slide eleven. Let's look at slide number ten. This is kind of a transition slide, but it is important. And this will be giving me the base to start with the part two. So now we look at it, of course, we live in a society, we are not alone, we interact with so many people. So here is a simple example, everybody needs a chair to sit on. So say I buy a wooden chair like this, shown in slide number ten. Then we make a, we ask a question, anything that comes into existence which otherwise did not exist prior to that, that is called as an effect. And that is made possible by certain causes. So we are analyzing a simple human-made object, namely a wooden chair and applying a law which everybody in the world will accept, so called Law of Cause and Effect. Because anything new happens, what is called an effect, due to certain causes. So we say that existence of this wooden chair is an effect because there was a time when it did not exist. Then we ask ourselves, how could it, how could it have come into existence? Then naturally, we don't need to devote much time, everybody knows it, that it must have been made out of wood. But if they are just some certain log of wood, it doesn't transform to a chair by itself. There must be a human name whom we call a carpenter. He must have transformed that log of wood into chair. So we say carpenter makes a chair out of wood. And why does he do it? Because somebody is going to, somebody has placed an order, somebody wants to buy it. So for an end user. So this is a total statement, carpenter makes a chair out of wood for an end user. So here you will see, there are three colors, wood is in green color and user is in a light brown color and carpenter is in red color. So there are three essential causes. If wood did not exist, no carpenter can make a chair. If there is nobody willing to use it, nobody willing to buy it, if there is no end user, why should carpenter make it? And if all this exists, there has to be a person who will transform wood into chair and that person is carpenter. So these three are different kind of causes. So they have been listed as wood as material cause which goes through transformation. It was in certain other form, now it has become in some other forms. End user is a beneficiary who is going to experience, sit on the chair and go through the bhog part. So these three shaktia we discussed, three powers of soul is important. What were our three powers to know, to experience, to act? So that means an end user who is beneficiary must be a conscious being, isn't it? So that means an end user who is beneficiary must be a conscious being, isn't it? Similarly, a carpenter who is efficient cause, who caused this transformation of a log of wood into a chair, he must be having the knowledge and also he can act upon the wood. So both end user and carpenter have a soul within themselves. That's what gives them that power to experience or power to know and act. Of course, sometimes carpenter may make a chair for himself, those possibilities are there. And say, not only a human being, even a bird can make a nest for itself or a carpenter can make a doghouse for a dog. So all these possibilities are there, but you will notice that a maker is always a conscious being and the end user, the beneficiary is always a conscious being. And of course, we see in the world, world now I'm on the second bullet point here. The world is basically consisting of inanimate world and animate world. Wood is part of inanimate world, this is world of consciousness. And animate world such as end user and carpenter, they are conscious beings, isn't it? So they must be having a soul within themselves. Because material things like wood doesn't, and so many infinite things we have, they don't show consciousness. That's why our unified theory is based on a non-physical consciousness. And for that, we have seen an example that our soul is one of them. So let's make a quick review of this part one. Ayusamaj advocates the Vedic Unified Theory of Matter and Consciousness. That's what alternately can be called as Satya Sanatan Vedic Dharma. We are in a shell of mind and body and able to know, feel and experience as well as act. These are the three important powers of our soul. And as we examine this particular man-made object, namely a wooden chair, there are three causes for anything to exist. There has to be a maker who has the knowledge and ability to act. So that is a conscious being who has the soul within it. There has to be some material that needs to be transformed and there has to be an end user who can enjoy, who can feel and experience its use. So that must also be a conscious being. So we have seen behind any effect, there are three major causes and two of them were conscious beings, while the material cause is world of consciousness. So I pass it on back to Vishuddhi, who will moderate the question-answer now.
Doctor, thank you for the time for this section. One of the viewer has expressed or requested that review the slide eight again. So I'm not sure which one is the slide eight, is this the one? Because I don't see the numbers.
Well, I can, I'm not, the slide eight has a title, we are body, mind and soul.
Okay, can you spend couple of minutes on this again? Because viewer forty-one has requested that we want to review it again.
Okay, that slide was, you know, I mentioned that soul has three powers. And then how does soul enter into me or in any animal, bird's body? Then we are saying, soul is in a tiny shell of mind. So for example, today I am a body, mind and soul. One day I will die. When I die, at that moment, my soul will leave this body, but it won't go alone. It will go along with the shell of mind. So that is a tiny shell which is soul-mind combined. And that is shown in this slide as a metaphor of thumb in a fist. So this is the continuity from one life to another. And in the mind, the shell of mind which is enveloping the soul, has all the impatience, so-called sanskar. And that is what I am carrying forward from previous life to the present and I will take it to the next life and so on so forth. So that is what I have discussed here. And that's how I entered into my father's body, then went into my mother's body. And over the shell, I picked up a gigantic huge body, which is now a human being as a whole. So you know, when I came into my mother's body, I was soul plus mind combined. And then the layer of the body was forming one after another. So that's how we become body, mind and soul. Is that okay?
Yeah, this sounds okay, Dr. Sub. One more thing I wanted to clarify for the listeners and viewers, that for the purpose of this exam, I know, Dr. Sub, you mentioned about Satya Sanatan Vedic Dharma and the Hinduism there. But for the purpose of the exam and the learning, because nowadays, we all are closest to the Hinduism and that's how our identity is in the modern world. So for the purpose of the exam, we have used Vedic Dharma or Satya Sanatan Vedic Dharma and Hinduism interchangeably. And as we go further in our study, like we did one, two, three and four, we'll realize what are the differences or what twenty items that Dr. Chandra spoke about have been different. So but for the purpose of exam and writing the questions and answers, Vedic, Satya Sanatan Vedic, Dharma and Hinduism are one and the same thing. Now, I'm unmuting all of us and then that will give us an opportunity to ask questions. While we are unmuting every one of you, if you can mute yourself from your side, that way any background noise will not interfere in the conversation. So here I'm, we are unmuting everyone. We can take the questions now. Someone has asked a question, Dr. Sub, on the chat. The mind slash soul does not enter the baby directly and goes father to mother to the baby. That was the question that was asked on the chat.
Can you please repeat the question?
So the mind slash soul does not enter the baby directly and goes from father to mother to the baby. Because in the slide eight.
Yeah, yeah, that is, well, that is the design. So it carries the certain physical information, so to say, the genes etcetera from my father also. So in my body domain, I show up certain characteristics of my father as well as that of my mother.
Okay, we can take the next question now. Anyone has a question?
Namaste.
Namaste, namaste.
I have a question. I still have problem. If we say that soul is consciousness and God is consciousness, how do we have the individuality of soul? Is it different kinds of consciousness, one of God and individual soul?
The consciousness is an attribute which is common with me as well as God. And there can be multiple co-existing consciousness. So I think, let's go through the part two, when it may be more appropriate to look at this aspect. And if it doesn't get answered there, I will try my best to answer it there. If not, then we can come up with this question again.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, okay, thank you.
Namaste, my name is Ranjit from New Jersey. I have a question, where exactly soul is in our body located? Is it fixed or it just moves? And depending on this answer, I have another question related to this.
Well, this is my view that the, that tiny shell, what I call the soul and mind combined, that must be somewhere in my head region.
Sorry, where? Head?
Somewhere in my head, yeah, that's where all our five sensory organs send in the data continuously.
Okay, but whenever we listen to provochance of Rupita Sarisamaj preachers, that at the beginning of this universe, the knowledge of Vedas was transformed into the heart of four wishes. So how this is related, yeah?
That's a very good question, it's a complex issue. But the actual meaning of heart is, is the location where the soul is residing. This heart, the word heart is not our pumping heart.
Okay.
You know, like in Yajurveda, we have six mantra of Tanmeh Manashiv Shankalmas. The last one, Hrith Patistam Yadajyam. So hrith patistam means, hrith is that heart where the mind is sitting. Obviously, mind is close to the soul, so the soul is actually the heart. So the word heart is not to be misinterpreted as pumping heart, that is usually hither. When it is just hrith, it is always this heart where the soul is residing. You know, the vocabulary is slightly strange. If you ask me where the soul reside, I will say in the heart. Where does the heart, where is heart, where the soul is residing, you know?
Okay.
But this, this heart wherever, as far as the location of the soul is concerned, is not to be confused with the physical pumping heart that has a business of blood circulation, you know? This heart is different. This heart means the soul itself where it is residing.
Okay, let's move to the next question.
Thank you.
Does anyone else has a question? Okay, I think, Dr. Sub, we can move to the next one.
Okay.
And I will.
Thank you, that was nice. Yeah, Vishuddhi made a good remark that the nomenclature Hinduism, Satya Sanatan Vedic Dharma etcetera, all that, you know, as I said, the test is a different thing and the learning is a different issue, is it not? So I told myself, I don't, I don't want to prepare you just for the test. I am trying to give you what I think is the right knowledge. So both are correct, so Vishuddhi is fine. So from nomenclature point of view, Satya Sanatan Vedic Dharma and Hinduism are identical insofar as the Veda test is concerned. Now we move on to the.
Dr. Chandra, give me a second, let me unmute everyone, unmute you back again, that way, just give me a second. Dr. Sub, can you speak now?
Yeah, I am ready to start with the part two and this is my slide number twelve now. The title is, The Universe and Three Eternal Entities. Here the starting bullet point is, which we have just now looked at it, carpenter makes chair out of wood for the end user. So that's what Vedic eschies did. They formulated the law of cause and effect and then they tried to extrapolate it to the natural objects. Because we are born here after the whole thing, whole universe has been brought into existence. The sun, the earth and rivers and mountains, everything exists and suddenly we appear on this earth. So any inquiry, how this universe came into being is very difficult because it was brought into existence before we came here. So naturally, we utilize what we learn from human-made object and then extrapolate our ideas and principles to the natural universe. So having learned that anything man-made has three essential causes. We said, somebody has to make it, some material is needed to make it and somebody is going to use it. And the maker and end user must be conscious beings and material thing must be inanimate matter, raw material. So on that basis, we say about the universe, we treat now universe as a effect. And what could have been the causes? And we say there must be another infinite conscious being that we call as God, tentatively. God makes the universe out of basic fundamental matter particles for the conscious souls. So we are all the end users of this universe and maker is the God, who must be an infinite being because universe is infinite and we all put together cannot make sun and the moon etcetera. So there has to be an infinite consciousness who has the knowledge, who has the ability to act upon these material particles and make the universe and who is going to, who is the end user? We all the infinite tiny souls. So that's where we get into the three eternal entities. And I just make a couple of more bullet points. We want to say God makes and not creates. Just want to emphasize these two words because if you say he creates, then sometimes some people get a meaning as if he creates it out of nothing. That is not true. He makes it out of fundamental particles of matter, which are in the very primary state, that is called pakethi. That word will be appearing in the next slide also. So this is a, this is a applica, the two statements in the first bullet point, just follow one after another. What we see that instead of carpenter, it becomes God, chair becomes universe, wood becomes the basic material particle and end user becomes soul. So God is not creating the universe out of nothing, but he makes the universe out of matter. So here are the three eternal entities. God is the maker in place of the carpenter. Matter which goes through transformation and everything in the material world is said to be intangible, it is manifestations. So everything is dynamic and nowadays we know it, scientists tell us that even a hard desk, seemingly it is a solid wood, but at the molecular level, there is movement. Everything is moving and changing at a molecular level. And then there is a tiny soul that is also consciousness like God is. But this God is an infinite consciousness, everywhere it is there, while we are localized at a point like consciousness. And we are the end user of the universe. We are supposed to live over here for some years and achieve something, that's our objective. We want to say these are three eternal entities in the sense, if one of them is missing, then the universe doesn't get explained. For example, if you just have God and matter, there are no souls, then why should God make all this universe? Doesn't make sense. If there is no matter, then how can God make it in the first place? You know, how these material things could have appeared? And if there is no God, only soul and matter, then we know it, even with all of us together, we cannot make the universe as it exists. So you will see, if one of them is missing, it doesn't get explained properly. And they are said as eternal in the sense, they are the basic cause, but they themselves cannot be treated as an effect. If you said this matter is an effect, then somebody will ask, what is the cause of it? So if you call this matter as X, then somebody says, X was made out of Y, then Y become the material cause of X, but what is the, what is the new thing you are learning? Except semantics is different. So finally, you have to admit that these things must have been existing forever. That's why they are called as Anadi. There was never a time they didn't exist and there is no cause for them to exist. They are themselves a cause. They cannot be treated as an effect. Let's move on to next slide number thirteen. Nothing new here, I have just put those three eternal entities in a particular order. So there are some sket terms which is not there, not necessary, but because book has that, I have also used them. So matter is also called as Pakethi. So this is very primordial state of matter. Nobody knows what would have been there, but what, in whatever way it existed before the universe came into being, that is called as Pakethi. And that has an essential property of existence, it exists. The Sanskrit term for that is Sat. Sat is coming from Satta or existence. Then there is a soul that is our soul, our Jiwatma, so to say. It has that property of existence, it always exists. There doesn't have to be any cause for it to exist. It is eternally there. Also, it exhibits a property what is called consciousness. And that we have discussed at length in part one. Because of this property attribute of consciousness, it has three important powers of ability to know, ability to feel and ability to act. Now god is also consciousness, infinite consciousness. It has those properties of existence and consciousness. Plus, it is always in a state that is called blissful. Like we know it, our states goes through a wide spectrum of joy and pain. We want to improve our quality of happiness, level of, we want to upgrade our level of happiness. But as far as god is concerned, he is always in that saturated state. That has a word, specific word is called Ananda. So that doesn't have a negative counterpart, like Sukh has negative counterpart of Dukh. Joy is there, then pain is also there. But in case of Ishwar, it is just one unitary state that is Ananda. The reason I made these words is, so god, you will hear such a term. God is also called as Sachida Ananda. So that is a compound word made out of Sat, Chit and Anand. Due to the Sanskrit rules of combining, you know, the Sat, this ta becomes cha and the ta sound of chit becomes da. So it becomes like Sachida Ananda. So it is a compound word made out of three words, Sat, Chit and Anand. So Maheshidayanam in second principle of Aishwaj, he will say, Ishwar Sachida Ananda Swaru. Then he writes his Neaka, this and that. So Sachida Ananda is Swaru. Swaru is said as inherent nature. Like I was trying to say, giving you the example of tiny lamp in a hall and I was trying to explain, soul has inherent consciousness. So it is not that soul has a, has an attribute of, soul is consciousness itself. So that is the meaning of Swaru, that is inherent attribute. So god has this inherent attribute of Sat, Chit and Anand. Let's quickly see now what god is maker, sustainer and dissolver. In the previous two slides, we looked at god as maker. Like that chair was made by a carpenter, in the same manner, universe is made by god. But there is again a very strange kind of a difference. Like chair is far away now from the carpenter. And if it starts, gets slightly out of order or one leg is now slightly loose, I will take it back to the carpenter and get it repaired, isn't it? So there is separation of the maker and that thing, the object he made it. But in Paramatma's case, in case of god, he not only makes it, he constantly resides in those things and sustains it to behave the way that it is behaving. So he is not only the maker but sustainer. And also dissolver in the sense towards the end, he will bring it back into those fundamental particles. So god acts in a, not just like a carpenter, but much more than that. So we will see, god is maker, sustainer as well as dissolver. These are three important functions of it. Now we are looking at it in the slide number fourteen as macro universe. So that, the infinite world that we live in. So this is visible world that is made of five grass elements called Panch Bhut. And the laws of nature forces that scientists tell us are gravitational force, strong and weak nuclear force and electromagnetic. So that is present physics. So this visible world is manifestation of the, all the physics, laws of physics at this point. And that has been created, made by god. And the way this world functions is also made by god. So god is not only the lawmaker because these particles of matter themselves could not have decided that yes, let us follow these laws so that these forces exist, namely gravitational, nuclear and electromagnetic. These forces are resultant of certain laws that have been imposed upon those particles by a lawmaker and we look at god as that lawmaker. Not only he makes laws, he ensures that laws are enforced so that every particle behaves according to these laws. So that makes him as law enforcer. The reason I am emphasizing this aspect is, so this will lead us to say that god must be all-pervading, Savuapak, Savantayami so that he, it can act as the prime mover for every fundamental particle. Otherwise, particle itself has no consciousness. It has no idea that I must behave like this. Why electrons are moving around the nucleus? Because there is a conscious being who is pushing those electrons to move in that particular manner. So that is the meaning I am trying to make it out of this slide number fourteen. Let's move on to the slide number fifteen. I am still on slide number fourteen, yes. I just want to talk about this five grass elements, Panch Bhut. So five grass elements are counterpart of our five sensory organs. So my eyes can see, so any object, the grass object that exists which I can see, that is emitting certain data in a certain manner that my eyes can capture that data. Similarly, if I can hear some sound from somewhere, like two clouds are coming together and there is a frictional sound, then that sound has been created by a source, certain objects, namely the clouds here. And I am able to hear that, I have that sense of perception. So there is a, that's the view of the Vedic Eses that there must be five basic elements, these are grass elements. These are not fundamental particles. These are five grass elements, they are registered over our five sensory organs. Let's move on. So god is maker, sustainer and dissolver also with the later in relationship with the micro universe, the me as such. So I am also part of this universe. But how does he make my mind and body, etc? So he is the maker. So god equips our soul with body and mind. So in this diagram, this is slide number fifteen. You see the soul is on the left side, which is in a circle. And my two instruments of mind and body, I and Squire box. They are made of matter and he is the maker for this. And then he bundles me in like this manner. So this is slightly unusual manner because, as I was saying, he is not only a maker, he is sustainer. So like I am speaking at this point and you are listening to me. We are functioning consciously with our mind and body. But a lot of things are happening within us which is so-called non-voluntary forces like breathing, blood circulation, digestion of food, so on so much. So that is all is called as Par. So from the right-hand side, if you look at the second block, which is an elliptical block, there is a domain called Par. So these are the forces, they are vital forces because if I stop breathing, I will collapse immediately. So these are all vital, non-voluntary forces because I am not doing anything. It happens by itself. But then the philosophy says that nothing happens by itself. So the cause of these forces are that Paramatma, that god. So god is not only the maker of me as a body, mind and soul, but he is sustainer of my life also. He has put me together and he ensures by way of these forces, these Paranic forces. If these Par did not work, I cannot use my body and mind. So he is sustaining my life so that through this domain of Par, so that I can use body and mind when I want to use them. So that is the second power bullet point. This is so-called powerhouse, these Paranic forces that constantly power, powers our body which is made of five grass elements and mind that is made of now subtle elements. So mind is made of subtle particles that cannot be seen by my sensory organs. And then as this, there is another, from right direction, the fourth block, which is again elliptical. This is titled as blissful block. This is, so to say, is our Anandamaykush. So that god is very close to me because he is infinite, he is ever, he is, so to say, all-pervading. So he is close to me, closest to me. So soul finds in its immediate vicinity is actually god. Then mind comes later. So actually, this is a representation of what is called Panchkush, five layers. The body layer, the Paranic layer, and then there is an outer mind layer, Manomaykush. Inner mind layer is Vijyanamaykush. Then this is Anandamaykush. So like we heard a question in part one, how can two consciousness co-exist? So that is the way it is there. Closest to me is this, not only closest to me, this is within me also. So just like air exists within water because air is more subtle than water. So that infinite consciousness is more subtle than my consciousness of my soul. So it is not only close to me, I am within that ocean of that infinite consciousness. So that is the way to look at where do I exist and how do I function? So of course, as we will be discussing towards the later part of this presentation, I want to be in upasana. So if I want to be in, because Maheshidayanam will say in second principle, Usi Ki Upasana Karani Yogya Hai. So upasana is being with him. But if I am always with him, now what is this upasana? Because I am within, with him and within him, but I don't realize it because I am always watching my mind, what my mind is depicting to me. That is good. You know, like I am speaking from my mind, now you are listening to me from your mind, using your mind. And so we are always connected to mind. So when we bring our mind absolutely inactive, disconnect from our mind, then I am with him, hearing. That will be upasana. Okay, we'll come back to that slightly later. Let's look at the third bullet point. Souls are governed by the law of karma. So we have discussed, all the material world is governed by those laws of physics. The souls are governed like why I was born in a particular family, somebody else is born in some other family. All this is due to the law of karma. He is the lawmaker and he is the law enforcer. So now I am on slide number sixteen. Maheshidayanam writes second principle of Aishwaj because he wrote originally in Hindi. So this is the original version. Where he says Ishwar Sachida Anand Swaru, Neaka and all that. I just want to highlight, he did not write Ishwar Sachida Anand, then Neaka. He has written Ishwar Sachida Anand Swaru. And then he is adding, listing about twenty or so more attributes of Ishwar. So Ishwar Sachida Anand is not his attribute. This is what he is. This is what is called Ishwar Sachida Anand Swaru. This part is not coming out well in English translation. That's why I brought this original version. Next slide is English translation of the second principle. Where Sachida Ananda just mentioned that god is existent, intelligent and blissful. If I were to translate, I would say god is inherently this and is also. So that's, there will be something that it is his intrinsic attribute, not like other attributes. He is formless, we can quickly look at it, no problem because the whole universe is infinite and he must be present everywhere because he is causing everything to behave the way it is behaving. So he must be existent. If he was existent and if he had a form, he would be visible, but he is not visible. So we must say he is formless. He is omniscient, he has all the knowledge. Indeed, knowledge is to know a thing as it is. So whatever we acquire because the thing is already in existence. But in his case, his knowledge is unusual. First he has the knowledge and then he makes the things accordingly. He is just, he just follows the laws because everything is going by a law, everything is, there is nothing arbitrary. So he must be just. He is merciful in the sense, whatever we need for our proper development is already there. We need food, water and air, all that is available to us. We wouldn't have known that I need two kidneys or not one. Everything is there in the right place and right time. He is unborn because he is always there. He is endless, no end to it. Unchangeable, he doesn't go through any transformation. He is beginningless, there was never a time he didn't exist. Unequaled, the support of all, the master of all, omnipresent. This is Savantayami Manand. He is within the soul, not only everywhere, he is within me. Unaging, he doesn't get old. He never dies, fearless. He is eternal and is holy, pure and the maker of all. He alone is Usi Ki Upasana Karani Yogya Hai. Now I would not translate upasana as worship, but there is no English word for upasana. That is the way it exists. God has many names. Based on his attributes, this is slide number eighteen now. God is known by many names, maybe even in hundreds or thousands. Brahma, Vayad, Parameshwar, Agni, Vayu, Shu is benevolent. Vishnu is all-pervading. Ganapati is lord of all. Maheshwar is great and with Ashvalayukta, Apa is everywhere. Jyoti is that light of consciousness, Rth is that Anandas, Amit, never dying, Bhu, Bhua, Swa, Dev, Mahadev. You know, you can construct hundreds and even thousands of names. But Om is his own name, this is his own name. Paramatmakam Niznam, that's what Maheshidayanam is writing. Now for the purpose of upasana, we are asked, that's what Patanjali is saying. Tasyavachakta, Tanav, Tanav is the name of this sound. And Tajapas Tadayat Bhavnam, we should recite this name for the purpose of upasana. What is that? That is with elongated vowel, that is called Plut Oh. So I think last week, Vimalji also mentioned, the vowel sounds are Hiswar Deeghan Plut. Short, long and extra long. Like O, it takes one unit of time. R, O, they are longest, they take two units of time. So this is three units of time. Like this one, the first Om, I will say is just Om. Now the split Om will be Om. This is unfortunately, even in Aishwaj, people make it act too very, very long. Somebody will say, Oh, he goes on for long, that is in kayak. It is Om. Plut sound is three times what the sound O will take. And this is a very natural sound. I like to give an example, on an Indian railway station, a chaiwada will say chai. Now both the vowels, A and O is elongated. This is Plut sound. He will never call it as chai, he will never say like that. So this is a very natural sound. So this is a very natural sound when we want to have an impact on others or on our own self. So that is the sound Om. What is upasana is to be in union with God, is to be with him and there is no English word to translate it. After that I have already discussed, this is possible only after we disconnect from mind. So the necessary condition is, I must make my mind still and blank, totally inactive, then only I can disconnect from mind. So this is a necessary prerequisite. And when I make my mind blank, that is called meditation. So the steps involved in upasana is, first I bring my mind blank, be in meditation and then I am likely to disconnect from my mind and connect to him. That will be upasana. Moving on, now slightly on fast track, this is slide number nineteen, God and soul, I am looking at it again, both of them together, and then I am asking myself, what can I expect from upasana? So we started the story in part one, the soul has three powers, to know, to act and to experience. So in this tabula manner, I am listing soul as well as God. And when I talk about soul, there is plus minus, what does that mean? And then there is a word limited. So under the head of knowledge, I have limited knowledge and plus minus means sometimes I have kayak knowledge, sometimes I have wrong ideas. So this may be like that for knowledge. While God has all kayak knowledge and it is unlimited. When it comes to the column of action, I can act, my actions are only limited. I have a limitations of body and mind. Also I can do, do good actions as well as bad actions. But in case of God, unlimited actions and his karma is always good, what is called Nishkam Karma and also called as Yajya Karma, you heard this last week. Then coming on to the column of Bhog, namely what we go through it, experiences. We can go through the spectrum of joy and pain, Sukh and Dukh. And there is again limitations, we cannot have infinite Sukh, isn't it? But Perma Atma is always in Ananda. So there is no negativity there and that is the finality of it, Ananda. Now we ask ourselves, in the direction of knowledge or action, I can never be equal to God. I will never be Sawajya, I will never be able to make the sun and the moon etcetera. But one thing we can do, we can have a taste of that Ananda. How does it taste? And that is what is made possible by upasana. So upasana can give us a taste of his Ananda. And this will be for everybody, everyone should be engaged in knowledge, action and upasana. So we started with our three powers of knowledge, actually, Jahan Karma and Bhog. And the right Vedic philosophy guides us to translate them into three pursuits, namely knowledge, action and upasana, Jahan Karma and upasana. So upasana will bring you to the eventuality, finality of Bhog, you get a taste of Ananda. How to do upasana? A very quick statement from Maheshidhanam from Megwiraadi Bhasky Bhoomika, English translation, page forty one. When he is writing the commentary on the Vedas, he says, we shall refer to the worship, this is again for upasana, only to the extent as would be compatible with the context and the actual interpretation, because the same has been described in detail by Patanjali in his Yogshastha. So Maheshidhanam declares that in his Vedic commentary, he will not go much into detail about upasana unless the context is absolutely about upasana. Why is he not going out of the way about upasana if that is so important? Because Patanjali's book on Yogshastha, Yogdharshan has already covered it. So that tells us that upasana, Patanjali's treatise, bottom of this slide is showing, Patanjali's treatise on yoga called Yogdharshanam or Yogshut describes the Vedic teaching of upasana. We should follow that. There is one more slide, very quickly, so evidence for God, this is, again I am, this is an offshoot of a slide I have already used in part one, where we discussed the three states, when body and mind is functioning, when mind is functioning and when body and mind are inactive and I am in deep sleep. Now there is a fourth picture, when I am in deep meditation. So this fourth situation, fourth state of mind is a counterpart of the deep sleep, sound sleep. Except that in sound sleep, I have no awareness, but deep in meditation, I want to preserve my awareness so that I can get a real time taste of that Anandaya. One more slide, certain terms with distorted meanings which are covered in that book, there is so-called Dvaitva, that's how, this is the original term, this was referring to two basic entities, namely consciousness and matter. This is a physical matter whereas consciousness is non-physical consciousness. And there were two terms, namely Purush and Pakethi. Of course consciousness has again two types, the micro consciousness of the soul of our jiwatma and that macro infinite consciousness of God, but both are consciousness. And Pakethi is nothing but this matter. Then somehow in the middle ages, this term came Advaitva, which is basically strictly speaking is non-dualism, which is fine, this term was also in use, that there is one and only one God, like Yatana To Nimeshato, Mahitvaik Idyaaja, so Ekayaja, that one God concept is there. To highlight that, that there is only one authority over the whole universe, that is what Advaitva was about. But somehow in the middle ages, Advaitva became a synonym for, as if God is the only entity, God alone exists, that is, if it is true, it will be called as monism. While we are on the direction of monotheism, there is one and only one God, known by different names, Ekam Sadhitpaya, Bahuda, Vadanthi. But then India slided into this thing that God alone exists, that monism concept, and that became a de facto synonym for Advaitva. Actual meaning was only one God exists, but now God alone exists. So to highlight, now Ayusmarj has coined this term Thaitva, which is not quite a orthodox term, but this is just to highlight that Advaitva should not be treated as God alone exists. So Thaitva is saying, there are three eternal entities which are basic, namely one is infinite, Purush, what Patanjali calls as Purush Visha. And all of us are Purush and there is Pakethi. The final slide, I am sorry I have exceeded the time slightly, overall view, I will just read them out. The Vedic unified theory of matter and consciousness, Saktis and Atan Vedic term includes three eternal entities, namely matter, soul and God. Soul has three special powers, to know, to feel or experience and to act. God makes universe out of matter, which are five grass elements for souls. As humans, we can discover laws governing the matter as well as the law of karma that governs soul. This is all we can know from knowledge point of view and also we can get to know God also by means of upasana when I am with him. We may not reach climax of knowledge and action, but can experience the climax of absolute happiness, namely Ananda, by way of upasana. There is a misunderstanding that upasana is a kind of specialization for some select people. Many people think that yoga is a philosophy for some people to read and all that, it is a specialized subject, no. Just like our intrinsic strength is Jahan Karma and Bhog, our intrinsic pursuit should be, we should be engaged in Jahan Karma and upasana. So it is for every human being, that's the way Vedic philosophy works. Thank you all for your attention.
I will unmute everyone now so that we can ask questions if any, for in the interest of time, we'll take two questions and rest all, you can send an email or we can address in the next one. So I'm unmuting everyone. Okay, does anyone have a question?
Yes, Namaste, my name is Adia Turi, I am from New York. My question, my question is, can you please explain the difference between Maya and Prakriti?
Maya is same as Pakethi, Maya is a manifestation of Pakethi, so I don't see any difference there.
Okay, thank you.
The Vedas, Vedas, the Pakethi has many terms like Veeksha, like Swadha, like Aditi and Maya is also a term appearing in the Vedas for Pakethi.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else has a question? Okay, Bhuvneshi.
Sorry, I think I was unmuted, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Namaste, this is Bhuvneshi. Thank you so much Dr. Harish Chandraji for the insightful talk and going much beyond the text of Vedas and giving a practical and really insightful view of things. Really appreciate your time and hard work you put in to this and appreciate everybody joining tonight. Just a couple housekeeping things, we will be posting the, tonight's recording on YouTube tomorrow and send out the link. Please do like the Facebook page, we've been putting mock questions on the, on the Facebook page. We are working towards getting mock exam ready and live for Sunday, November twenty six. So the Vedas team is working on that and we look forward to continuation of the study of the material next Sunday. I do appreciate everybody joining again and any closing comments, Veshruji? Thank you.
Thank you Bhuvneshi, you have done very well, thank you.
Vimalji, you want to add something?
Veshruji, no, I think I'm fine, thank you. Thank you, Harish Chandraji.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone, thanks for joining. Please look for the YouTube videos tomorrow on the Facebook and we'll talk to you all next Sunday during the talk by Pandit Bharat Singh. Namaste everyone, Shubhratri, good night.
Namaste.
Namaste.